We are meeting today in the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2025-08. It is Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, and it is AM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vorder.
Present.
Trustee Desmond.
Yep.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke. Trustee Olenicek. Trustee Mallow.
Here.
Trustee Stalker.
Here.
All right, we have a corner. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Veterans, please salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergapped, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation from Metra on the railroad crossing repair at Kilborn Avenue and Southwest Highway. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you for having me here today. My name is Dimitris Skofis. I'm in the Community and Government Relations Department at Metra. And so I'll start my presentation by just doing a quick slide here, an intro to Metra. You can get next slide. There we go. So in 2024, we provided over 35 million passenger trips. That is still down from pre-COVID numbers, but we are seeing our ridership increase as more companies are going back to full time. Still, hybrid is a big model of working three days in the office, three days from remote. But March, we're seeing an increase of two, we saw an increase of 271,000 more rides in our system that we had budgeted and planned for. So that's good news. We operate 692 trains daily over 11 rail lines through Cook, in this collar counties. We even have a station in Kenosha, Wisconsin. We are one of the largest rail systems in the nation, covering like the six county region. And in that region, we also operate with all the Class 1 railroads. So what the, what we call the Chicago area is called the Chicago Terminal. On a daily basis, weekday basis, there's about 1,400 trains between Metra, Amtrak, and Freight that go over the, over the rails here in this region. So it's a very complicated system. And the Southwest Service here that goes through Oaklawn, we do not own the tracks. So we have trackage rights with the Norfolk Southern Railroad. But I just want to give you a little background on the, on Metra here through Oaklawn. So why I'm here today is the Kilborn Avenue Crossing. It is a rehab project that will require the temporary closure of 10 days in order for our crews, it's Metra employees performing the work, to rehab the crossing, which essentially is the removal of all the existing infrastructure. They're going to saw cut the asphalt, they're going to take out the rail, they're going to take out the ties, the ballast, they're going to go down, make sure the drainage is appropriate so it doesn't undermine the track bed, and install new cable, new signal cable, new rail. And so the rail just won't be the section that goes through the vehicular crossing. It'll be in both directions for a certain distance. New ballast and everything. And the nice thing is, we are switching from what they call the high rail rubber panels that you have out there, and I have photos of them, to a concrete panel. Similar to what we did at the other crossings, we've done three crossings in town here already over the years, the first being Cicero Avenue, 95th Street, and then most recently, last fall, we did Central Avenue. So I have some photos to show you. But it is a significant investment in town, $450,000. The closure is Wednesday, May 14th at 9:00 AM. We will begin, our crews will begin saw cutting the asphalt at 9:00 AM. At the same time, our traffic control contractor, Barricade Lights, the suburban company here in the Chicago region, they start putting up the detour signs when we close the crossing. They will install signs two weeks prior at the actual crossing. So whoever's driving over in both directions, people will know that crossing will be closing on May 14th at 9:00 AM. They'll have two weeks' notice. The folks involved in the project internally, and these contact names and numbers have been shared with Village Management, the project manager, he is the one that you will call if there's any issues. Bill Myers is familiar with, and Jerry Dillon, I've shared the contact info with him. 24/7, he's available. If for some reason he's not available, our police dispatch numbers, they're posted up there, 312-322-2800. The police chief has a long contact list. We're very well aware of Christ Medical Center being a trauma one level center. And we know that the proximity of Kilborn Crossing to the hospital is a critical route for ambulances and emergency vehicles. So we are doing everything we can to reach out to all the emergency responders. So our police department has reached out to Chicago OEM, BD, FD, Chicago or South Suburban Chiefs of Police. But we're also asking the Village to reach out to your contacts that we may not have in order to notify everybody and anybody that the crossing will be closed. We've done this hundreds of times before throughout our region. And this is not the only crossing in close proximity to a hospital or something like that. So we are familiar with, with the concerns about having the crossing closed for 10 days. The good news is typically, and there's no guarantee, it's weather permitting, they're always scheduled for 10 days, they sometimes and often wrap up in about nine. So hopefully, we would be out on Thursday rather than Friday. Our Director of Communications drafted a press release to go out. We've also shared it with your staff in order for them to reach out to any organizations or news media that we might not be familiar with here in the South Suburbs. Our Director of Marketing will take care of the social media aspect. I am Community and Government Affairs, so I've been working with your staff as well. We have shared a lot of information already. This is the first public, I guess, notice of this project, but we have been in touch with, with your staff. And then, as I mentioned before, Barricade Lights is the contractor that plans the detour and will install the signs or place the signs the morning of in two weeks in advance. So detour route, this is the northern half that shows Kilborn. It's not very good. We've shown, we've emailed this to you, got the best image I could. This is the northern half that shows Kilborn, Southwest Highway. The next slide is the southern half towards 95th Street. Again, this has already been shared. This is something that's required to submit to the Village. And there's some other additional slides that have, you know, blow up of certain intersections. Existing conditions, why are we doing this project? As I mentioned, we did repairs in 2024. You could see the grinding that we did, the asphalt grinding, to make it a bit smoother. But because of the condition of those panels and the proximity to the hospital with probably heavy vehicles like ambulances going over, there's some more pictures are more detailed. The panels are at their end of their useful life, and so we had to prioritize this for 2025. Plus, the pedestrian part on the outer side, outside the roadway, you could see there's trip hazards in that photo. You could go to the next slide. You could see the cracks in the middle with the asphalt grinding, but that allows moisture to get underneath. That's not good for not only the surface, but also for the signal cable and all the undermined, you know, the, under the track bed. You go, you could see the vehicle strikes on the high rail rubber panels there, the scratch marks. There you go, cracking. So this has to get done this year. You go to the next slide, and this is what we're going to be doing. So this isn't a local project. Essentially, that's the concrete panels we saw cut. We go, we excavate everything, we put in new stone, new rail, the concrete panels there. We've found them to be more durable and long lasting than what they call the high rail rubber panels. So that's what we're using. It's more expensive, but long-term wise, maintenance wise, it's a, it's a better product for us. That's what it looks like as the panels are installed on the one side, and we have to jump to the other track there. And then there's your finished product with the asphalt approaches, the cross hatch on the pavement, and the panels. Like I said, we recently did Central Avenue in the fall of 2024. So I was just out here on Friday snapping these photos. So here's a nice pedestrian path, wide, smooth, eliminate the trip hazards. And then the next slide shows you looking west there. That's what, that's what the finished product will look like at Kilborn. And that wraps up my presentation. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Excellent presentation, sir. You know, Kilborn Avenue is a unique crossing because it's elevated.
Elevated.
You come up, and then you have to go down. Certainly, if people are speeding, that's how they ground out. Any, I don't think we can do anything about that elevation, though.
No, you can't. So I talked to our guys, they're going to do the more asphalt work further away from the tracks, so the more of the approach will be done to smooth it out. But you, you can't. I mean, you would have to lower the tracks.
Right, right.
Hundreds, thousands of feet in both directions.
Right.
But that's, you know, we're, we're aware of it. We'll do the best we can to smooth it out. I am the one that was out there on Friday taking pictures. So I'm well aware, you have to, we have to get it done because it's, the heavy vehicles, probably ambulances, deteriorating that crossing. And you have to do it for safety reasons. You have cars, some cars were coming to a very, almost a stop to go over the tracks while the car behind them was rushing up on them. So you had people braking and other people flying over the tracks. So creates an unsafe condition, driving condition for.
Yeah, it's a busy, it's a busy crossing.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board?
Is the, is the detour planned to go to 95th and Cicero to go around? Or the home, there's one hometown track I know that's over there by hometown.
So the only crossings, so you have Cicero, you have Kilborn, then you have Duffy. So the route is essentially going to, to go over the tracks, you're going to have to go to Cicero.
A lot of those ambulances always turn. They come down Cicero Avenue and they turn down Southwest Highway. That's where they go. It's like all our lights change, lights on 95th and Cicero change. But I drive that every day, so I see the, the lights change, and those ambulances always turn left to head towards that Kilborn.
Yeah.
Track to get to the hospital as quickly as possible. So I didn't know if they're, because 95th and Cicero is very, very crowded and.
Sure.
Very difficult. So I don't know if, Diana, have you been able to receive some of that stuff for, for your group? Okay, so.
Yeah, so the detour signs, and there's a lot of them, this plan, again, it's what I could post up there, but staff has it. There's a blow up on some of the intersections they want to share with you. I could send it to you.
Sure.
It's de, very detailed. There isn't much we could do because the only thing that.
I can tell you, a lot of buses also cross there. Oaklawn High School goes there every day, and a lot of buses, school buses cross there.
Totally agree. And we want to keep them using that crossing, but if it just continues to deteriorate, unfortunately, the opposite will happen. We'll have to shut the crossing. It's not a, you know, it's just, the conditions are so bad, it could damage.
Is the one on Duffy just as, as high, or is it?
So we didn't, we looked at Duffy, and again, Barricade Lights, they're pros at this. It's like road safe. They're, they're big companies that understand that traffic, the detours, and I think they will have to work with IDA. I'm not too familiar with that process, but they work with IDA, all those road, roadways of what's a appropriate detour. And Duffy just doesn't seem like we would want to send vehicles.
Right, it ends up being down residential's to get.
Very dense residential, it's circuitous, you know, it's circuitous route. So Cicero's the best.
Best, best they can to get through, depending on traffic.
Any other questions?
Yeah, is the rail traffic going to be operating during this construction?
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, rail traffic throughout the region, Metra, Freight, whatever you're doing, it doesn't stop. So what we have on site, there, anytime you're doing work, it's a federal railroad administration requirement, whenever you're working on the tracks or within the right of way, you have to have a safety officer, a flagman, and that flagman dictates when the workers can start and when they have to be pulled off because of oncoming trains, and when they could go back to work, so.
I assume you're going to take one track out of service at a time, or, or not?
Yes, yes, they'll have to. It, it's a pretty amazing thing that they do of how they swap out the track and they do it so quickly. But yes, there will always be a track open for service.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other?
There might be, you know, it'll be a slow zone, there could end up being some, excuse me, Mayor, sorry, you know, some delays through there, depending on what's going on. But service continues to operate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thanks for your presentation, excellent.
You're welcome. And I just want to commend, you know, your staff, Jerry, and I, I've worked a lot with Bill Meyer, they're wonderful to work with, you guys are very fortunate to have them. We appreciate everything they do. Bill and I were talking before the meeting, I, I call Bill a lot more than he calls me, so he's always been very helpful, so.
That's what makes Oaklawn the town I want to live in.
It's a.
F.
I'm, working with Oaklawn is a pleasure.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, lead line service replacement program, we have a presentation, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you trustees for letting me present today. My name is Katie Richardson, I'm with TY Lynn, and I'm going to be the project manager, program manager for the lead service line replacement program. I also have our construction manager, Patrick U. Daly, with me too, if we have any really detailed questions. First, I want to start with why we're doing this lead service line replacement program. To begin with, it is a large investment for your community. I E P A and E P A have required that we do replace all the lead service lines within your community and by community water suppliers. There's an estimated over 9 million in the rest of the country here in the village of Oaklawn. We're going to be dealing with about two, a little over 2,000, 2,300. To protect the, the classified materials that we're going to have to replace are lead, we're going to look at galvanized steel as well. And then we're also going to identify unknowns as we go through this process. As the Public Works team has been working on identifying all the lead service lines, there has been a few unknown materials identified. So as we're doing the construction, we're also going to be working to make sure that we can identify anything we haven't been able to, to date. There is, yes, like I said, about 2,300 service lines that need to be replaced. Go to the next slide. We, right now, are working to get a loan from I E P A. We will have that confirmation on July 1st for this first year. As I mentioned, I'm from TY Lynn, formerly Greeley and Hanson, and we have been hired by the Public Works Department to be the program manager and to lead this process. There is, we will have a selection of a contractor for this first year's program, and that will come to all of you to approve once we get that RFP out. We want to make sure we have the loan first, and then we will get a contractor on board. And then we anticipate construction to begin in August for the first year's set of lead service line replacements. We go to the next slide. This is a little bit hard to read, but this is our schedule that we're looking at. We're going to try and replace 417 lead service lines this year. It'll probably be somewhere between 400 and 420. After we get the contractor on board, we'll see what their bids are for each line replacement. And then we work with them to get as many, up to that 420 on this year as possible. The whole process, if you go to the next slide, will take five years. There's going to be approximately that 400-ish for the first four years, and then anything that is left, which is about 550, will be done in that fifth year. We have been working with the team at the Public Works and then also here at the Village to make sure that we have our messages ready for the public. There's going to be a lot of questions. This is a project where we do go onto private property. In fact, we have to get into people's homes, or we have to get them to sign off that they're not interested in having the lead service line replaced, and there's a waiver process for that. So there's a lot of interaction with the residents, with both our inspection team, our outreach team, and then also with the contractor. So we have been, what should be expected from the community is that we will work, our team, our team of inspectors will be working and talking to, out to the residents to either sign those right of entry forms, which lets us onto their property to then look at what the conditions of the home are, or that refusal paperwork. Once they have decided that they are going to let us onto right of entry, we'll work with the contractor to schedule the work. And we're going to be endeavoring to get blocks to do this at a time where we have a cluster of lead service lines to do, so that we kind of disrupt one area at a time. But because of the nature of scheduling with everyone when they can be available, there is going to be work going on in multiple nations, multiple times. The projects themselves only take about 48 hours, so they can usually do, one crew can do two replacements a day-ish, unless there is something challenging that comes up that they haven't identified. So it is fairly quick for the homeowners, once we can get it onto the property. And we will also be working with them on getting them lead pitchers for after we've done the replacements. That is part of the requirements and just good practice, so that if, we're going to disrupt the line, so we want to, anything that, of the materials inside the pipe that get disrupted, we want to provide filters for. And we'll also be asking them to participate in some water quality sampling after we're done, so we can make sure that we have the quality that we're expecting after this project is complete. The contractor is likely going to pick a type of methodology of construction that's the least disruptive. We're seeing a lot of what we call trenchless construction, where they kind of pull the pipe through underground, and they just have to make pits at either end or get into the basement of the homeowner. There may be some that will disrupt the land, and they may have to do with an actual trench, depending on the situation. But we'll work with, like, the contractor will have restoration of people's property to a certain level included in that. So we will work with the homeowners to disrupt, to the least disruption to their gardens and things like that, if we can do it. If we go to the next slide, we have, this is, the red is the locations where we've identified lead service lines. And we're going to be working, as I said, to prioritize this first year is going to be anywhere where there's higher risk populations to lead exposure. So that's going to be preschools and medical facilities, any other care facilities, things like that. And then we'll be working our way to the different locations until we complete all 23,000, or 2,300, excuse me, replacements. And we'll get more definitive with that, too. We're going to put the map up on the website when we have the different locations for each year. We have them identified, but we'll be sending out mailers to get them engaged, and that will be located on the Village website. And I think with that, I can take any questions.
How, how long is the customer usually out of water service?
About four to eight hours.
Four to eight?
Yes, somewhere in the vicinity of.
Four to eight, about 40.
Correct, four hours to eight hours. A half a day-ish to a full day of work.
I have a question.
Yes.
Homes built after a certain date do not have this issue, so.
Correct.
What year would that be?
Um, oh boy, it's, yeah, it was like 86 or 84, thank you, Pat, yeah, 86.
If your home is built before 86, you may have an issue.
Correct. And that would have been identified in letters that were, as we did the inventory. So the homeowner should be aware, as the Public Works went through the inventory process previously, if, if it is, but, you know, people move, so we'll be reaching out.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a couple. So businesses, do they have, are they part of this project?
They could be. So that's where preschools are going to get identified, to medical care facilities, places like that, that may have a lead line. We've identified, those are going to be prioritized first, but some businesses could have a lead service line.
Okay. And the company that you hire, are they going to help with the landscaping? Usually, that's the issue. They're, they're in, they're out, and everybody's like, well, who's coming back to fix what has been torn up?
Right.
Complaints that I received from residences, it takes a little bit longer than they would like, but obviously, if it's a process that we're having.
Right. We will identify restoration requirements for the contractor to a certain level, but usually that is things like the grass and some shrub replacements. If someone has a very ornate garden, we're going to have to talk with them about that situation in particular. So that's usually not included in what we have the contractor base replace, but that's something that could be worked out.
Most of these come from the front?
They, yes, these are mostly coming from the front.
Sometimes the back, or?
Um, it's, I can't think of any areas where you guys have, but there's a couple that come from the alley, yeah.
How long do they, the notifications, do they get in advance, sir?
The first letter will come out 45 days ahead of our anticipated construction, and then we're going to follow up with a door hanger 15 days after that, and then we will be knocking on doors.
Perfect, good.
Until we get ahold of everyone.
This may be a question outside your realm, but.
Sure.
I've been drinking water from Oaklawn lead lines for my whole life.
Sure.
What is the medical consequence of that?
So it, um.
What, damage, what?
Bringing the meeting down.
It, it, it is a, what do we want, how, I would say, it is an escalation situation. It is worse for like babies, small children, pregnant women, things like that, and immunocompromised folks. But there is a lot of people that have been drinking water for a long time. Okay, so you have to work with your doctor on that.
I know, I remember reading that the downfall of Rome might have been lead, their lead pipes supplying water.
Well, it is, I mean, this is a huge investment, but, and it's going to be some inconvenience for folks, but this is a really important thing to do.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Any other questions?
What percent is lead in Oaklawn? Like, is there?
Um, you have 70, no, yeah, it's 2,300 homes, how many?
16.
Yeah, 16%.
Well, out of 16,000.
Out of 16,000, so not very, 2,300 out of 16,000.
And that includes the schools, Jerry, or?
Yep, that's all the connection.
So running those numbers, it's not the case that every home built before? Because clearly, most homes were built before 1986.
Yes, and in some places, it's been, it's already been removed. If there's the utility or the Public Works Department, as they've been having, bottom main projects have removed some along the way. And then we also, we do have some unknowns where we do have to figure out exactly what they are. We didn't have great records as we were doing the inventory process, but yes, it's not every home. Sometimes there's plumbing changes that happen.
So we can trust in the people that are calling us saying, I didn't hear anything, I want my, they've already been replaced.
They, they may have, and we'll be able to check that for them.
You mentioned the refusal component.
Yes.
What, can it be that they just refuse outright? And what does, you know, what's the recourse? How do we proceed?
There, there is the ability to refuse right now. At some point, because of the mandate from EPA and I P A, we have to wait until ownership changes, or the Village may decide that they want to use a different methodology to get back to those folks and have them replace. We've, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation. You're going to be around for five years.
I will, yes.
Okay, well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, public comments. Do we have any public comments today?
We do. Yes. Did you want to speak? Oh. Okay. No problem.
You have to speak now.
All right, we have no public comments.
No.
Okay, conflict of interest disclosure. Any trustees have any problems with the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the regular meeting minutes of 2025-07, dated April 8th, 2025. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business by Village Trustees, District One, Trustee Desmond.
The only new business I have is just a reminder for people now that the weather's getting better, people are out walking, they're walking dogs, they're pushing strollers, and I keep getting calls that sidewalks are blocked. So people are parking their cars on the sidewalk and blocking pedestrians. So just want to give a reminder that if you park a car on a sidewalk, you will get a ticket. It might be a warning the first time, but next time you will probably get one. So please be aware of your neighbors that might want to get some exercise. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, trustee. District Three, trustee Mallow.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing regarding the Sunday concerts for the summer. I do have the dates that we have confirmed are going to be the dates, bring the bands at a later time, but the Sunday concerts will be two in June, one June 15th, June 22nd, or two in June. July will be July 13th and July 27th, and August 3rd and August 17th will be the last Sunday concerts. We do have one concert on July 4th Parade Day, that's a Saturday, June 28th, and all concerts start at 6:00 PM. So more information regarding the bands will come at a later date. Thank you.[1684.25]
Is that all trustee?
All set. Thank you.
Thank you. District four, trustee Pembroke.
Uh, no new business.
Okay, district five, trustee Stalker.
No new business, thank you.
And district six, trustee.
No new business, thank you.
That's good. Okay, village managers report.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just one item, following up on trustee Desmond's comment about the weather getting warmer. And when the weather gets warmer, historically, we see a lot of complaints from residents about other residents' homes, upkeep, grass, weeds. And our property maintenance department has really upped their game the last couple of years, been proactively going out um across the village, targeting each district, historically uh problematic homes. And I'm just wanting to get the message out there that, you know, if your home is cited, if you do have a door hanger or a note, that if you take care of the problem reasonably quickly, there generally is no problems moving forward. There's no fines. Uh, we've had occasion where people refuse to um address the problems. Um, those fines turn into liens. Those liens make it problematic to sell your home. So we don't want that to happen. So please, if you do get notification about your property, try to address it as quickly as possible. I think we give a couple of days. Isn't that correct, Gary? Um, and we do work with people, certainly elderly people who have problems, taking care of it. We try to help them out as well. But communication's important and, and responsiveness is more important. That's all I have this morning.
Thank you, Tom. That's uh, every spring, that's a common complaint we get as trustees and the mayor on somebody's property not being maintained, grass being cut. So getting the message out there is important. All right, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine and brought forward at the direction of the board of trustees, the village manager, or the village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request the board of trustees approval for the Oakland library's use of the village green on Saturday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine thirty A M. to three P M. For their quid ditch on the village green event. B, request the board of trustees approval for the Oakland library's use of the village green for their annual storytime on Thursday, June twelfth, Monday, June twenty-third, and Wednesday, July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. C, request the board of trustees approval for the Oakland library's summer reading kickoff foam party to be held Saturday, June fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, from two P M. to six P M. With fees of three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents for use of the village resources. D, request board of trustees approval to waive the village incurred fees for the Saint Catherine's Carnival to be held Wednesday, June four, two thousand twenty-five, through Sunday, June eighth, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of four thousand ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. E, request board of trustees approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendation, that was a seven-zero, for the plot and re-subdivision and lot width variations at ninety-two thirty-five Crescent Court, dividing the existing one hundred and five-foot lot to be split into two. F, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight dash thirteen, and ordinance approving a re-subdivision and granting related lot width variations from section four dash five A dash three C of the Oakland Village Code to allow an existing lot with the width of one hundred and five feet to be subdivided into two lots, each being approximately fifty-two and one-half feet width at the building setback line in the R-one single-family residence zoning district at ninety-two thirty-five Crescent Court. G, request the board of trustees approval of the zoning and planning commission's recommendation, seven-zero, to permit an existing lot with the width of one hundred feet and a depth of two hundred ninety-six feet to be subdivided into four lots. Ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight dash fourteen, and ordinance approving a re-subdivision and granting related lot width variations from section four dash five A dash three dash C of the Oakland Village Code to allow an existing lot with the width of one hundred feet and a depth of two hundred and ninety-six feet to be subdivided into four lots, each being fifty feet wide at the building setback line, each with a depth in excess of one hundred and forty-six feet in the R-one single-family residence zoning district at sixty-three fifteen West Ninety-second Street. I, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight dash fifteen, and ordinance amending Title III Business and License Regulations, Chapter III Liquor Control, Section three dash three dash thirteen of the Oakland Village Code relative to building and location restrictions. J, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight dash sixteen, and ordinance amending Title VI Building Regulation, Chapter I Building Code, Article A Building Permits and Fees of the Oakland Village Code relative to contractor licensing and registration. K, ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight dash seventeen, and ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the village to dispose of and sell surplus vehicles. That is uh two G dash zero seventeen Ford Explorer, five G dash two fourteen Ford Explorer, nine G two thousand eighteen Ford Explorer, fifteen P M. two thousand fourteen Ford Explorer, eighteen P M. two thousand thirteen Ford Explorer, and twenty-six G two thousand three Ford F two fifty, and waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of replacement vehicles. One, two thousand twenty-four Ford Expedition X L T, four, two thousand twenty-five Ford Escapes, and one Ford two thousand twenty-five Ford F two fifty XL in an aggregated total amount not to exceed two hundred and forty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. L, resolution twenty-five dash zero eight dash twenty-six, a resolution approving a proposal from Christopher B. Burke Engineering, L T D, to provide on-call professional engineering services for the village of Oakland from May first, two thousand twenty-five, through April thirty, two thousand twenty-six, on a time and materials basis in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars without prior written approval, up to a maximum of forty thousand dollars. And M, resolution twenty-five dash zero eight dash twenty-seven, a resolution approving an extension of a twelve-million-dollar line of credit with Windtrust Bank related to the regional water system improvements project. That's it.
Motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion approved. Village clerks report.
Disbursement Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight D, dated April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five, in the amount of three million, three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion to pay the bills.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Write the checks. All right, village presidents report. I have a proclamation here. Uh, the mayor will proclamation for Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Lyme disease is the fastest-growed Victor-borne disease in the United States caused and is transmitted by the common black-leg tick found in nearly one-half of all U.S. counties. Whereas Lyme disease affects more than three hundred thousand people annually in the United States, yet testing for Lyme disease remains only fifty percent accurate, with the average patient going two or three more years before getting a proper diagnosis. Lyme disease is an under-reported illness. Therefore, the actual number of people with Lyme disease in Oakland is likely ten times the reported number of the cases. Whereas children are at the highest risk for contacting Lyme disease, it is the responsibility of every community to educate the public about the signs, symptoms, and treatment, and how to prevent Lyme disease. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the village president of the village of Oakland, Cook County, Illinois, in the ex- exercise of its home rule powers, states that the month of May shall be designated as Lyme Disease Awareness Month. Couple other things, um, you know, uh, today or yesterday was the anniversary, fifty-eight years ago, of a tornado, an outbreak of tornadoes, which struck most of northern Illinois. Here in Oakland, we lost thirty citizens to that tornado and uh o- over a hundred million dollars of property damage. That event should never be forgotten and always should be kept in the minds of our residents as tornadoes could have popped up and caused severe damage. We've in, we've installed many warning systems and modern technology today keeps us much more aware of the possibility of tornadoes. But keep in mind that years ago, we lost thirty of our residents to that destructive force. And one more thing, tonight, the Oakland Library is opening an event there which reminds or commemorates over a hundred years of public safety here in Oakland. I'm sure it'll include some of the uh events that occurred with that tornado. Uh, it's at seven P M. tonight. They have a ribbon opening and we anticipate a number of people there. So if you're interested, please be at the library at seven P M. That's all I have. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Trustee Stalker.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thanks for coming out.